Greenwood County Council, sometimes I don't say enough about our appreciation for you coming out and engaging yourselves in the operation of local government. So, thank you for that. Your Greenwood County Council has been in executive session since 4:00 PM, and the interest of transparency, I'm going to ask that our county manager please state the reasons that we needed to do that. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, members of County Council, we needed to enter into executive session for the following six matters: two personnel matters pertaining to the Greenwood County longevity and merit pay programs; two legal matters pertaining to road ownership and the Boys and Girls Club of the Crescent Region; and...
Whoops.
It's on a delay.
I'm not sure where I left them.
That's my fault. That's something Tom's doing for me that's gonna serve me well later in the evening, but it's on a 30-second delay. So, Tommy, you can just turn that volume down. Go ahead again, Mr. Manager. I'm sorry.
All right. I think I left off on legal matters. So, two legal matters pertaining to road ownership and the Boys and Girls Club of the Crescent Region, and two economic development projects, projects currently known as STAR and Black Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate that. Counsel, having heard those and those men made apparent now to the public, I'll entertain a motion. We exit executive session. So moved. Motion by Vice Chairman, second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor, and that is so ordered, and we're out of executive session. Thank you. Trusting that you have each had an opportunity to review the minutes of our previous meeting, do I have a motion that we accept those minutes into the record?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Allison.
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller. All in favor. That's unanimous and so ordered. As always, folks, we begin our meetings with prayer, and we will honor our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Father, we just thank you so much for this day, and I thank you for each and every individual here. I thank you for all the, our employees of the county, and Lord, I just thank you for each and every individual who lives in Greenwood County. Father, I ask that as we get ready to make decisions for Greenwood County, that we make decisions that honor you. Lord, I thank you for each one of my county council, my fellow county council members, and Father, I ask that you just continue to bless us in all our ways. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager and Madam Attorney, I don't think we have any actions to take coming out of executive session, so having none, we'll move into our segment of presentations. We have a quarterly update on investments from First Citizens Bank, and I see Mr. Neal, Neil and Jared are here with us tonight, so welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody. We're, as always, excited to be here. I will scroll here behind you, but I think you all probably have your physical copies. As usual, we'll start with Neil kicking off with some market perspective, and then we'll go through each account. Neil, I'll throw to you from the moment.
Thank you, sir. We will move in your materials. I'll just very briefly hopefully give you the state of the fixed income market. I'll start on page five in your materials. Can't talk about fixed income or really any other asset class without talking about the Fed, so probably the most important piece of information is just what are our expectations on the interest rate environment going forward? As Jared will get to later, you have one portfolio that goes out three years, one that goes out five years, which is great that you have that ladder portfolio, because what we do expect is shorter-term rates to go down. So, if you look at page five, you can see these are the Feds, so the members of the Federal Open Market Committee's projections of interest rate cuts. So, you can see in the chart or in the graph, I guess you should say, where the latest cut was. So, September 17th of 2025, there's a quarter-point rate cut, and then you can see the dotted lines for, you know, the progression of rate cuts going forward. And just beneath there in the call-out box, these are the Fed's expectations of rate cuts. So, they expect two rate cuts, two more this year. So, one in October in a couple of weeks, one in December, one in '26, and one in '27. If you look at market expectations for cuts, there are two this year, so that makes these two cuts this year pretty certain, or certainly as we can be. If you look at market expectations, 95% and 98% chance that they'll cut in October and December. Market has three rate cuts next year. We're not quite there as a firm, probably two, probably see two rate cuts next year, maybe not the three. We'll see how that plays out. There's a lot of data to come out. As soon as we can get data, with the government shutdown, as you know, there's not a whole lot of data out there, so we're trying to use other sources of information. But definitely several rate cuts in the offing. So, the current rate is 4% using the lower bound, and so short-term rates, you know, 30-day, 60-day Treasury is about 4%. As you're going out to two years, about 3 and 1/2. So, you're laddered out that far, which is good, because those 4%ths, if these projections are correct, that becomes 3% over the next few months. And maybe even if you look at market expectations, 2.75 on the short end of the curve. So, good that you've locked in those rates. That's what you do with the ladder portfolio, so that's where you are. Great place to have been this year as rates have come down across the curve this year, believe the entire length of your portfolios, rates have come down. So, it's been good for the bonds that you've already held. And like I said, I think the most important piece is you sort of locked in those rates out there, because you know those shorter-term rates are coming down. I'll just mention very briefly, you know, from what the Fed's perspective is, page seven and eight, two mandates from the Fed. One is inflation, so inflation, as you can see, has come way down. Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. And so, still sticky. Unemployment, there's a couple graphs. There is a page, I put in there, page eight, talks about employment, just where we used to talk about two job openings for every one person employed. That's now pretty much one-to-one. So, unemployment, the Fed's focus seems to be on that now. The latest report two months ago was very weak, so the Fed gave a, which was the title of the previous page, a risk management cut of 25 basis points. So, they'll continue to see how the information comes out, but certainly they do seem to be concerned about the labor market, and that's certainly one of the things we're looking at. But I'll stop there and say, do expect two rate cuts this year and maybe a couple next year. But I think the portfolios are positioned very well for that. Let's see if there's any questions.
Thank you so much.
If we don't have any questions on market analysis, we'll move to a quicker view of the portfolios. Go with me to page 13 in the bottom left-hand. This would be your Electric Capital Fund, so this is the one that we mentioned, is a little further out, and we're able to go lock in some rates based on the investment policy for this particular account. Yield to maturity on your far right, you'll see is set at 3.56%. Like Neil mentioned, this will hang in there longer than your shorter portfolio, given that you were able in that time of when we decided to change the investment policy to go out a little longer. So, that will continue to look more and more like an excellent decision, having been made in that time as the years go on. On your left-hand side, you can see a quick representation of where money sits from the perspective of duration. Right about in the middle, you'll see where it says period, and you'll see bond maturity. So, those are the different amounts between one and three years and three and five years. So, pretty roughly split between those two bands. So, that's Electric Capital Fund. If you continue, bottom left-hand page, let's go to page 19. Same spread here. This being the operating fund is the shorter duration, so you'll see where we just were on the last page, on the middle point, the left side of the page, a much smaller portion in that three-to-five-year band, the bulk of it sitting in three years or shorter. Today, yield to maturity there is 3.62, so as expected, a little higher than the one that's a little longer, difference being that we'd be able to hold on to that rate a little longer for the longer version. There will be a point where these two cross, and the longer we'll be earning more if we continue to see the Fed bring rates down. But we'll wait to see exactly what happens on that front. So, I'll pause there. Any specifics on the accounts themselves that we wanted to go over or dig deeper into?
Go ahead.
All right. With that, we'll yield our remaining time. If there's anything we can help with otherwise, please let us know, but we're, like as always, we're happy to be here. Thank you all for your time.
Counsel, any discussion, questions before we end this presentation? No questions, but again, thanks to First Citizens and to our treasure for the work that you all do in coordination to keep this in sound financial shape. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further old business counsel to conduct this evening, so we will move now into our sec...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was my mistake. Thank you. I don't know what I'd do without Ms. Bishop to my right.
Yeah.
Better put my glasses on and keep them on. Item A under Old Business, Ordinance 2025-24, considering the proposed amendment to Greenwood County zoning ordinance to reflect changes regarding the use of temporary off-site and temporary on-site development signs. Ms. Carol Coleman, our planning and zoning director, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our third reading for this ordinance. This is to allow us to control the types of signs and the number of signs that can go out associated with developments in town and in the county. We've given you a cleaned-up copy that has corrected anything that was miscued in there, and that's what you'll be voting on tonight. Planning Commission supported this, and staff also recommended approval.
Counsel, you've heard from our planning and zoning director. We'll entertain a motion to vote to approve this, if that be your pleasure. Do I have such motion? I'll be a motion, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion by Mr. Templeton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor?
We have a discussion.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry again.
Sorry, I was not...
No, any questions and discussions?
Yeah, I was not at the last meeting. Sorry. Physically, I was zoomed in, and I just want to clarify that this is dealing with real estate signs, only this has nothing to do with the smaller local business-type signage.
Correct. These are real estate signs in the form of subdivision signs, both for the permanent signage and the temporary signage when they're under development and selling lots and houses.
And development signs, correct?
Development signs, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Just wanted to clear that up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Allison.
And again, from last meeting, Ms. Carol, I think you told us that this ordinance does allow a real estate agent to put their pointers in the right-ofways, and...
No, sir. No signs are allowed within the right-ofway.
Okay. They can put it on the property.
Private property.
But they can't put out at the road showing the way to get in, like at the right-ofway of a neighborhood. Can they put it at the entrance of a neighborhood?
They can put it at the entrance, but not within the right-ofway.
Okay. Have to be on the neighborhood property.
Exactly.
For clarity, I believe our ordinance requires no signs within our right-ofways, correct, Madam Attorney?
That is an ordinance.
Yes. And Carol, again, for clarity on this, in regard to developers, there's a distance restriction. Would you remind us what that is, please?
Yes, we have within a half a mile.
Five signs within a half a mile, 250 feet apart.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, once again, please.
Yes.
What about a political sign?
This does not apply to political signs at all.
Okay, so a politician could put his sign wherever he wants to put his.
We're not addressing that with this ordinance. So, the political sign ordinance is separate from this sign ordinance. It's a completely separate part. This is not touched at all in what we're doing today.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? If none, we have a motion, a second. All in favor of adopting this is presented. Any opposed? And that passes on a six-to-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now, we will enter into our public hearing section of our agenda. So, Counsel, I will ask now that you give me a motion that we move into public hearing, please.
Motion to enter.
Second. Have a motion by Ms. Miller and a second by Mr. Templeton, and we are now in public hearing.
We've got a vote.
I'm sorry. I really slept four hours last night. I need to start sleeping more. Yes, ma'am, please. All in favor of moving into public hearing, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Before I move into this portion, Mr. Patrick Hobson, are you here tonight? Mr. Hobson, present. Thank you for being here tonight. We're gonna speak about an issue that Mr. Hobson's involved with later on that Counsel has discussed. Ordinance 2025-1, authorizing pursuant to Title IV of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, including sections 41-174, 11-175, and 42968, therefore Article 8, Section 13 of the South Carolina Constitution, the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Greenwood County, South Carolina, and one or more companies known to the county collectively as Project STAR, to provide for certain annual special source revenue or infrastructure credits to enlarge the boundaries of a joint county industrial and business park and three other related matters. Our Economic Development Director, Mr. James Bateman, will give us information on this. Please, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of council. As the chairman recognized, Patrick Hobson is the President of Chandler Construction Services, and he is attending tonight as Chandler Construction expands its facility that is known as Project STAR. Greenwood County has been discussing this project, an affiliate of Chandler Construction Pipeline Development. Those are named in the agreement that was in your packets and has been amended on the copy that is at your desk that we'll ask you to vote on. Before we do that, and before you ask for comments on this, I'd like to tell you a bit more about Project STAR and Chandler Construction. Patrick, who the chairman said appreciate being here tonight, came to me in July of this year with a business that had doubled by nearly every measure in the past three to four years, that had a decision to make about the future of a company that spent 55 years in '96. And by working together with the company and with the support of this council, offering stable taxes to the company, Chandler Construction and Pipeline Development are committing to invest $10.1 million over the next 10 years. That will construct a new maintenance shop, renovate their existing facilities on 96 Highway, and add new administrative space. And on the next slide, Madam Clerk, is a rendering of this new headquarters facility as you would see it from 96 Highway. That's what this $10.1 million investment represents on the properties that are already owned by Chandler Construction, a bit set back in the woods. Now, part of Patrick and his business partner's vision is to be up on the highway where our community sees Chandler and its expanded headquarters. This expansion will create 31 new jobs, as well as retain all the employees that Chandler has in 96 in Greenwood County. So, we are appreciative of Patrick being here tonight and the council's support of this project for Chandler Construction and Pipeline Development. Before I conclude, want to point out that the agreement that is at your desk has been amended, filling some placeholders in the agreement, such as changing the Project STAR to name the company and its affiliate, as well as putting dates to the 10-year investment period. So, those placeholders have been filled. Those are the changes from the version that was included in your packets to the printed copy and the version that is on your desk. So, when you ask for a vote on this matter, we ask you that you adopt it as amended. To the council, vote in favor.
Yes. Thank you, James. Appreciate that. Counsel, well, let me ask now, since we're in public hearing, is there anyone here in the audience tonight that would care to come forward and speak in support of this? Yeah, I'm looking at you.
First and foremost, thank you very much for accepting this request and doing it in such short order. I didn't, in the construction industry, we tend to move fast, and it is better to get down the road and not look back. So, thank y'all very much for your consideration and your willingness to move forward in the timeline that I put in front of James. Chandler Construction has long preceded me and my partners for that matter. The Chandler name has been a good thing for Greenwood County, and we have full intentions of maintaining that and representing the county well. We go to North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, and we raise eyebrows every time we say 1511 96 Highway. Everybody asks where 96 South Carolina is. So, we educate a pretty large region, and thank y'all very much for everything. And hopefully, you know, we'll be up on the highway. We didn't necessarily pick it to be a flashy thing in 96. That's kind of against what Joe Chandler wanted, but that's the best site, and hopefully it will bring some pep to driving down from Greenwood to 96. I think it will look good, and it was important to us to increase our investment, to not put something out there that's an eyesore. So, thank y'all very much.
Mr. Hobson, before you sit down, if you would please, just state again your name and your address for our record, please.
My name is Patrick Hobson. I'm with Chandler Construction Services Incorporated, and we are located at 1511 96 Highway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak in favor? Seeing none, I will now ask if there's anyone in this audience that would like to come forward and speak in opposition. Seeing none, I will ask you, Counsel, what is your pleasure on this? Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I offer you a motion to approve as amended.
A motion to approve as amended by Ms. Bishop.
Second.
A second by Mr. Templeton.
Mr. Allison.
Any questions or discussions?
Allison. I say, I think it was, I think Mr. Allison beat me to the punch.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You second that, Mr. Hobson? Thank you. Any questions or discussions on what we've... Any questions or discussions on what we heard? Comment. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hobson, for being here. Um, I will, I don't mind telling you, I, um, when this was first brought to counsel, I was fully in favor. As someone who grew up in Ninety-six and knew Mr. Chan, not knew, no, Mr. Chandler personally, and, uh, run into him from time to time, and, uh, although it's in Mr. Allison's district, I do represent Ninety-six, and, uh, Chandler's been a outstanding business partner in our community for a long time. And my comment to Mr. Bateman, and he'll back this up, was I think we need to do what we can to keep them here. And, um, we appreciate the ten point one million dollar investment, the additional employees of thirty-one, and, uh, proud to have you here in Greenwood County, proud to have you in Ninety-six. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the opportunity to piggyback on that, Mr. Hobson. I think that, uh, one of the reasons that this moved as expeditiously as it moved has to do with the reputation of Chandler Construction, as you said. I know Joe and his wife. I don't think anyone in this community has been any more dedicated over, I think you said, fifty-five years. He is, he is, uh, he has a heart for philanthropy. He has invested heavily, um, in this community to make it better. So thank you again for being here tonight. Counsel, any other comments? So what, excuse me, Madam Attorney?
We just wanted to be very clear that there's still a sales tax component to add into the agreement, so that you're, you're voting based on what you have in front of you with the idea that the manager and I will, um, negotiate that sales tax component. And I think that Mr. Hobson's aware of that, and, um, his counsel's aware of that, but I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Having heard that, uh, Ms. Bishop's, uh, motion was that we approve as amended with those considerations. All in favor? And that's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item C, ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-six, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that one parcel of land totaling approximately point six-three acres at one-thirty-one Sanders Court, Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes from C-two general commercial to R-two single-family residential. Again, Ms. Carol Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, as you stated, oh, I'm sorry. There we are. This is on Sanders Court, which is off of Montague. Um, you can see it one row back. Uh, currently is zoned, uh, highway commercial, general commercial. And the applicant owns the property across the street, across Sanders Court. Her son wishes to build a house on this property and can't do that under the C-two zoning, so they're asking for the same residential zoning of R-two that is across the street so that they can build a house there. This was supported by staff as well as the planning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Remaining in public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone present this evening that wants to come forward and speak in support of this proposal. Seeing none, is there anyone that cares to speak in opposition to this proposal? Seeing none, counsel, I will ask for a motion.
I'll offer you a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mr. Templeton.
Second.
Second from the vice chairman. Any co, any questions or discussions on this matter? If not, all in favor of approval, please raise your hand. That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item D, ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-seven, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that two parcels of land totaling approximately one point two-nine acres at thirty-twenty and thirty-twenty-two Highway seven-oh-two, Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes from RDD Rural Development District to C-two general commercial. Ms. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, these are two parcels that total one point two-nine acres, as you stated, on Highway seven-oh-two, um, near the intersection with Wilson Bridge and Watts Bridge Roads. Um, the request is to change the zoning from RDD, which is Rural Development District, to the same C-two district, general commercial, to allow for the establishment, I guess, or the approval of a storage facility that will allow for boat and RV storage on the property. Right now, everything out there in that area is zoned RDD. RDD does allow the commercial uses. The issues that the applicants have is that they have to have a minimum of two acres in order to permit it. Under RDD, they are asking for the C-two to reduce that minimum lot size requirement. If you have specific questions, I can address them.
Comes with a recommendation for approval from?
It did come with a recommendation for approval from the planning commission and from staff.
Yes, ma'am. Counsel, Pat.
Carol, can you give us a little bit more history on this, how we got to this point? Um, this is in my district, and I've had phone calls and emails in favor and against, and I want to make sure everything is considered.
Yes, sir. Um, the applicant is here. They can probably explain the history of their side of it more. We were made aware of this as a result of the estab, of the placement of an illegal sign on the property. Um, the previous owner was running a construction company off the property that no one in the office, even in the building office, was aware of at the time. So, um, we told them that they could not operate there for the same reason. They didn't have the adequate acreage for it. Uh, they opted to go somewhere else, sold the property, and the applicant came in with the desire to, um, store our boats and RVs for people who live in subdivisions where they're not allowed. Um, we were made, made them aware of the same issue, so they came in and made an application to change the zoning to see if they could continue that use. Since it's a rather passive use, um, I think that's why we had support for it. We've had the discussion before that, uh, changing the zoning would allow other uses as well. But again, um, RDD does allow commercial uses, so if they had more property, they could move forward with it without any change in zoning. Does that help a little?
Remaining in public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone here tonight that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this proposal? State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's James Hooper. I live at, uh, one-oh-five Waterford Drive in Ninety-six. Um, my wife and I bought this piece of property, um, basically because we were born and raised in North Carolina, decided to retire. We came to, basically came to Lake Greenwood to retire. And we had some property in North Carolina we had to sell. We need to reinvest money in property. This property became available. We bought it, probably didn't do my due diligence on it, but the day we went and looked at it, there were dump trucks, bulldozers. There were fuel tanks, lumber, people up there. So, you know, we just kind of took it that it was already zoned commercial. There were some other bids coming in on the property, so we wanted to jump on it and purchase it. And, uh, basically, the main reason we're wanting to do what we're doing is we really don't have a use for the property. We just bought it to, to invest. And we have friends and family, and a lot of people in Grand Harbor needed a place to put boats, trailers, whatever. And, uh, ever since the hurricane came through, insurance went sky-high. So our insurance on this property that just covers the building and the fence is eight thousand dollars a year. And you start adding, you know, taxes and internet, stuff like that, it's twelve thousand bucks a year. So we're just trying to do this to recoup a little bit of our money, basically. And it'll be a whole lot quieter, less intrusive than the business that was there because there were trucks coming in and out all hours of the night. Um, I've talked to neighbors and told them what our intention was, and so far I haven't had anybody object to it, to me. So, uh, that's based our story, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hooper. I do recall I attended planning and zoning meeting, and you had neighbors, closest neighbors who were.
The neighbor, the lady right behind.
Right. In support, in support of your proposal, because it's going to be better.
That is correct.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Quick question, Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Hooper.
Hey.
Mr. Hooper, come back if you will.
Sorry. Hey.
Yeah.
Had a quick question. So you said you didn't do due diligence, but you, you had a real estate agent, or you bought, you just?
We saw the for sale sign on the side of the road. It looked like a, you know, it looked like a business, so we kind of thought then.
Was it advertised to you as commercial property for sale?
It was not. We saw the sign, contacted the owner. We went and looked at it. Like I said, all the stuff was up there. And, uh, like I say, there were several other people interested in buying it, so we just kind of maybe jumped the gun a little bit, but, uh, like I say, I didn't do my due diligence. Do not.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that. As counsel member, I try to do my due diligence too and look at everything. My heartburn is, you know, having someone take the property and basically go against our rules and do what they did to start with.
Yeah.
And, and then we're putting our stamp of approval on something possibly. That's why I have to give it the full thought. Um.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of why we're doing what we're doing. We wanted to do it the right way, the legal way, and, you know, um, you know.
And I, and I appreciate that. I, I wasn't trying to be negative towards that at all. It was more of the thought process. I don't, I don't want you to sit here and I'm just gonna raise my hand one way or another and you not know why. I think, I think I owe you that, that much since it is in my district. I remember when Agner's Garage was built, and I've considered about the future of land use. I also have considered, I've always seen that as residential, um, growing up and going down Wilson Bridge and Watts Bridge Road. Um, but I appreciate it. I, I wish there was some way that, you know, you had re, met that two-acre threshold that Carol and I talked about, where it would remain, RDD or PDD?
RDD.
RDD, um, that way it wouldn't be much of a question. Um, the only part that really scares me at this point is, you know, you can say I'm building boat storage, and I've been by there several times, and that's what you've got in here right now. Just keeping it that way because commercial opens up a, a wide array of things.
I do understand. When, when my wife and I purchased that property, we actually put it in a trust, so that, if you look at it, it's actually deeded at two separate trusts now. You know, our plans are to keep it, and, uh, our plans are, you know, we've retired here. Our plans are to stay here. All of our kids live in South Carolina, so, you know, when the day comes, the good Lord calls us home, then, you know, it'll be theirs. They, they can have a boat storage place.
I appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
I have one question, just for clarity, and I may have this property confused. Is your home also adjacent to this property?
No, no.
Is there a home on this property? I, I was thinking.
There is a duplex out on the little corner point out there.
Okay.
I don't know that you can see it, but.
You are not residing on this.
He resides in Grand Harbor.
No, I'm not residing. I'm, I'm, I live outside. I don't live in Grand Harbor. I live outside of Grand Harbor.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hooper. Ms. Carol?
Counselwoman Miller, the, the duplex is right here in the corner right there. I'm sorry. And then there are houses down here on this side. These are the two parcels that they have the interest in.
Okay.
Carol, put that, put that back up if you will, please. So the neighbor who was closest neighbor, does she live in the duplex or live behind?
No, she lives, she lives, wait a minute, let me see. Here, look at that. There it is. She lives right there.
Okay.
Or no, right, that she lives right there. There's, I talked to the gentleman that lives right here, too. He had some concerns.
Okay.
So he may be here tonight.
Okay.
Just a, one more thing I wanted to add. Part of the reason that staff supported it and the planning commission supported it was the future land use maps from the comprehensive plan showed this as a commercial node for future development.
Right, right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in favor of this proposal? Seeing none, is there anyone speaking in objection to this proposal? Seeing none.
Chairman?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir. I have, um, four that were submitted through email, um, that, uh, four comments that were in favor of as well. I don't know if you want me to read them from the residents or if you want me to just include them in the minutes, but, um, either way, there were four separate families.
Read them into the record, please.
Okay, all right. This one is from William Leslie. Says, "I'm writing in support of the rezoning to commercial, the property owned by James and Sonia Hooper at twenty, at thirty-twenty Highway seven-oh-two Ninety-six. Candidly assumed it was already given the work trucks and frequent business activity at the lot prior to the Hoopers' purchase. Additionally, Agner's Garage Commercial Enterprise is across the street. The use of this property is a planned storage lot. Will be quieter and less intrusive than the previous activities there. Further, as a resident of Grand Harbor, I know of many other residents that feel as I do and support the rezoning approval. Thank you for your consideration and hopeful approval of the Hooper's request."
Thank you.
So that was one. All right. This one is from Terry O'Reilly at, uh, two-fourteen Compass Point Ninety-six. Says, "My name is Terry O'Reilly. I've known Jimmy and Sonia Hooper for over six years. I met them through business dealings when living in North Carolina. I actually moved to Ninety-six because they introduced us to the area. I've come to know them personally, and we are now friends. I can attest to their integrity, strong work ethic, and commitment to community as well. I am writing to you to give my support for their effort to rezone their property at thirty-twenty Highway seven-oh-two from residential to commercial. It was apparent to us that the use of that particular piece of property was used as commercial previously. There were heavy construction vehicles at this location and dealings of that sort for the last year that I've been driving past it. Their storage location offers a much-needed service for me and my neighbors at Grand Harbor. It is a great location for us, secure and easy accessibility. I respects, respectfully urge you to allow them to rezone this property to commercial use. Thank you."
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, this one is from Karen and Rupel Harley. "The Greenwood County Planning Commission, I am writing to express my strong support for the rezoning requests submitted by Jimmy and Sonia Hooper for the property at thirty-twenty Highway seven-oh-two Ninety-six. The Hoopers have been valued members of our community for years, consistently demonstrating integrity, hard work, and a genuine commitment to improving our area. Their plan is to operate a commercial business on this property, represents a responsible investment that will bring both convenience and economic value to our community, particularly for residents near Grand Harbor and throughout Ninety-six. This property has already been used in ways consistent with commercial activity, and approving this rezoning will simply align the destinat, the designation with its practical use while encouraging local business growth. The Hoopers' continued investment reflects exactly the kind of community-driven development that Greenwood County should support. I respectfully ask that you approve their request to rezone the property to commercial use. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration."
Thank you, Ms. Michael.
And this last one is from Scott and Kelly, uh, I think it's Eberhart, three-twelve Compass Point Ninety-six. Says, "Greenwood County Planning and Zoning Commission, as a resident of Ninety-six, I am writing in support of the rezoning to commercial, the property owned by James and Sonia Hooper, at thirty-twenty Highway seven-oh-two Ninety-six. This is a benefit to have another active business in the community. This is an excellent repurposing from a former work yard and frequent activity at the lot prior to the Hoopers' purchase. The use of this property as a planned storage lot will be quieter and less intrusive than the previous activities there. To further support the petition is Agner's Garage Commercial Enterprise is across the street. Lastly, men, many other residents that have expressed this opinion and wholeheartedly support the rezoning approval. We all have to support our local business in order for our community to thrive and grow. Thank you for your consideration and hopeful approval of the Hooper's request."
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
I'll ask again, are, are there any, are there any others in the audience tonight that would like to speak in opposition? So seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing and ask you, well, first, a motion to close this public hearing.
Did we? Oh, we're gonna stay in. We had been stayed in on the first couple. We stayed in on the first couple, Mr. Chairman. We didn't close it out, so if you want to close it, we'll be happy to, but.
Oh, no, you're correct. We need, no, you're correct. We're correct. We need to stay in, and we'll, we'll hand, we'll close these.
Close it after item F?
Yes. So, so having, having heard those, those conversations, um, counsel, I will ask you, what is your pleasure on this?
I'll offer you a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Have a motion by the vice chairman, a second by Ms. Miller. All in fa.
He said to approve.
Motion to approve.
He said to approve.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Yeah. He said approve.
A mo, a motion.
I scared you on that one.
A motion to approve as presented. All in favor of approval as presented, please signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous? Is that unanimous?
It was.
Thank you very much. Item F, ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-nine, to agree, to amend the Greenwood County, County zoning map as and if amended. So, so that three par.
Oh, twenty-eight.
Skip one.
Skip one.
Let's skip D.
Folks, I apologize. I keep jumping off, jumping off my page here.
Yes, this one.
Yes.
We're on A.
Thank you. Again, I don't know what I'd do without Ms. Bishop. Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that one parcel of land totaling approximately three-point-oh-eight acres at one, at ten-eighteen Magnolia Drive, Greenwood, South Carolina, changes from R-one residential low density to. Changes from R one residential low density to C two general commercial. Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Chairman, this property is off of Highway two forty six south and Magnolia Drive is on the corner of one of the entrances to the Magnolia Place subdivision. The request is to go from residential to commercial. Um, you can see right here, the current zoning is R one. Um, the property across the street is C two. Uh, the difference here, you can see, viewing it, it's completely undeveloped. Grassy and just open for some sort of development. Across the street, there are storage units over there. The proposal is to go to, um, commercial to allow for storage units on this property as well. The difference in our support for the property in the middle of the two Magnolia Place accesses is that that property was future land use of commercial. This property had a future land use of residential low density. So we stayed with the recommendation for the future land use maps in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. So remaining in public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that, that would come forward tonight to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Seeing none.
I have one question real quick, just clarification. Carol, the plan, planning commission did vote to deny this.
Planning commission voted to deny and staff recommended.
Recommended deny, thank you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to deny.
We have a motion by Ms. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Templeton. The motion is to deny as, as presented, all in favor of denial. And that is unanimous. That is unanimous, thank you. Okay, at this time, and I need to, I need to make a statement before we move into item F. Most of you know that I am employed by Duke Energy and therefore I have, I have recused myself from any considerations in regard to the next item F. I'm going to read that item and then I'm going to leave the room and I'm going to turn this meeting at this point over to our vice chairman, Councilman Pruitt. And Councilman Pruitt, at the end of this, you, I believe, will take votes on all the matters that we've just discussed in private hearing after you close the private hearing. Everybody good with that? So I, I will, before I leave, I will, uh, I will introduce to counsel, um, the Duke Energy team that's here tonight to give presentation on this matter. Mr. Sterling Bowen, Sterling, if you'll stand up, please. Sterling Bowen is the project manager for this proposal. Um, Ms. Andrea wages to his right as an infrastructure engagement representative for this portion of South Carolina. Welcome you all tonight. Glad to see you again. I'm gonna leave. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Okay. You gotta read it, gotta read it.
He's already read it, I thought.
No, he didn't read it.
Okay. Okay, alright, so, item F on our agenda tonight under public hearing, and I want to remind everyone that we are still in public hearing. Ordinance twenty five, twenty twenty five dash twenty nine to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that three parcels of land totaling approximately one thousand and five point seven one acres at one 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 five, Five Notch Road, Greenwood County, South Carolina, GP number sixty eight forty dash four six four dash one five three, sixty eight forty dash oh seven eight three nine six and sixty eight forty six nine zero dash oh nine, oh eight three. Changes from FA Forest Agriculture to RDD Rural Development District. Following the same procedures we've done on the previous, uh, public hearing properties, I'll turn it over to our county planner, Carol Coleman, for an introduction and discussion on this.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. As you stated, this is about a thousand and six acres, a little less than that. Currently zoned FA, which is forest agriculture. The request is to go to RDD to allow for the establishment of a solar farm on the three parcels in question. Um, the property is off of Rock House Road, Five Notch Road and Hunter Road. Those are the three frontages that we were dealing with. Uh, you can see that this is all within an, um, area that was comprehensively zoned to FA a few years ago. Um, FA district specifically excluded solar farms as a use. RDD allows them as a permitted use. You can see there's a lot of undeveloped land out there. You're probably familiar with it. There is farmland out there, a lot of tree farms, um, and residential as well. Uh, you can see also there's a flood, floodway that runs through the property, so it kind of separates it out as to where they can locate things. Um, we've got views from all of the different frontages. This is from Rock House Road, which is the main frontage up at the top where the number one is on the photo. You can see there's a house across the street. Um, that's Rock House Road, then going down Five Notch Road. You can see a lot of residential areas. Some of them are agricultural. Um, looking back on Five Notch Road towards Rock House Road and looking down Five Notch Road towards Hunter Road. More views of that and then, um, north on Five Notch, looking up from that photo, um, location until you get to Hunter Road. That's the third parcel, which is completely on Hunter Road. Like I said, the first two have frontages on Rock House, mainly Five Notch, and then the third, which is on Hunter Road. So this is the future land use map. It's shown for, um, preservation, conservation and preservation. And this is their map to show the different, uh, parcels that are included with all of the other frontages or all of the other parcels included. These are their photos, so I'm gonna go back to ours. Um, RDD, as I stated a few moments ago, RDD allows almost everything, um, that we have available in the county with certain parameters. So while it's listed in the RDD district, um, as a permitted use, there are conditions that are placed on that permitted use. Typically, that would be listed as a conditional use, but in order to have a solar farm, you have to meet all of the criteria that are listed, and I believe you have that as a handout that I highlighted for you. Uh, if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to address them. As far as public notification on this one, we did advertise it in the paper more than two weeks in advance. We sent out, um, we put out signs in five separate locations um, on Rock House Road, three on Five Notch and one on Hunter Road. And then we sent out notices as a policy through the planning department to adjacent property owner notices, and those went out at the same time the ad was sent to the newspaper, so more than fifteen days in advance. Again, if you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to address them. Uh, the two, the first two things I listed, the advertisement, the legal ad in the paper, and the signs are required under state law. The notifications by mail are a courtesy, um, but that's, that's what our ordinance states that we do as the adjacent property owners. That does include property owners across the street.
Ms. Coleman, I have a question. I'm looking at the environmental and other page. I don't know if you can flash that up there or not and make sure I'm looking at this correctly with the, the water sources and whatnot. I see a lot of blue and I see some greenish looking yellow on my screen. Um, what impact to the environment and the water source does a, and I'm assuming clear cutting is going to occur and some, to put solar panels out on all these, these acres of land? So the environmental impact to the water source, but I also am just now noticing that it says that this is, uh, Cunning Hoard Creek and it's a high-risk flood zone.
Well, that, that's an area that is considered a flood zone, so they can't put actual structures in the flood zone. Um, other things can go there, but, um, I'd rather that the engineers explain this to you than my, if you look at the photo, the aerial photo now, much of it is already clear cut. So a lot of this area in this part of the county is, is tree farms. And they purposefully cut them every few years, you know, when they get a, a full growth and then wait a few years for it to be replanted. In this case, much of this is already cut.
So any negative environmental, environmental impact has already occurred from the clear cutting, that component of it?
But that is an agrarian use. I mean, it's, it's completely normal for what we do in this part of the state.
Manager, you had something?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna maybe back the planner up from going down, speaking on environmental impacts. That might be a little out of her wheelhouse.
It's, it's a slide, so I was just a question, what I'm looking at.
That's the vice chairman.
Yeah, I was gonna say, any further questions from counsel?
One question that I would have, and maybe the, the energy provider has more information on this. Number one, what was the recommendation from the staff and from the zoning?
Staff recommended approval.
Recommended approval. Have you seen a, uh, uh, a diagram or a layout of, of, they cannot develop, put solar farms on a thousand five acres due to the fact that you've got flood plain? Do we know how many acres actually will have solar panels on it out of that thousand acres?
We do not, but they are required to have setbacks and buffers. So they can't come within a hundred feet of a residential use. They can't come within fifty feet of a right of way. So they've got a substantial area that's gonna be free of any solar panels. But I would, again, defer to the developer to explain that in detail.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions of Ms. Coleman at this time?
And to clarify, when I said it can't come within a hundred feet of a house, they can't come within a hundred feet of a residential property.
Property, okay, property line. Thanks for that clarification.
Anyone else?
Okay, so at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this. Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium and state your name, and I also want to remind everyone our rules of engagement are you have three minutes to speak. Um, our clerk will be handling the timer. When it goes off, please wrap up what's being said, and if counsel has any rebuttal questions, um, we'll allow them to do so at this time. State your name and address.
My name is Sterling Bowen, um, and I'm here on behalf of Duke Energy. Um, our headquarters building is on South Tryon Street in downtown Charlotte.
Thank you.
Um, so I brought some slides this morning that may, uh, address some of the questions, uh, that were, um, that were just posed. Um, in particular, uh, council member Allison, there are additional properties that will be part of this particular development. Um, there are, um, three of them that we are, uh, asking for a update to the, the zoning map. There are, between the four landowners, there are around twenty five hundred acres in total that we will lease as part of this project. Um, the actual number of acres that we think are suitable for solar is somewhere around a thousand for the reasons that you, um, identified or hinted at, that there are wetlands and areas, uh, where the topography won't allow us to build as part of this project. I brought, um, some, a few of these slides to address some questions that we thought might be of interest to the, the general public. Um, so an overview of, of what will happen during the construction phase of this project. Um, it is currently on a track where it's targeted for end service in year twenty thirty. Um, the owners of the land will, um, have the right to timber the land, uh, before we begin construction. Um, construction could go as quick as fourteen months or could take as long as twenty months. That will depend on the infrastructure in the area, how they can stage work and availability of local labor. Um, our construction standards require best management practices, which is a lot of what you see at construction sites with steel fences and, and sedimentation control measures. Um, it's likely with a project this size, we'll need two to three entry points. Um, there could be as many as two hundred deliveries, um, at some course of, over the fourteen to twenty months. Um, a project this size could need it at some point between two hundred and three hundred workers as well too. So all of the entry points will have to do with where we need parking and, and if we can't have, if the general contract, uh, contractor doesn't have enough room for three hundred workers to park, the project obviously might take a little bit longer. Um, some of the heavy work, um, that will be done is grading, trenching, uh, driving of steel piles, um, setting, uh, equipment with heavy machinery. Um, this is a general overview of the construction timeline for a typical project. Um, so, uh, if the project is approved, uh, and is eligible for interconnection to the transmission system, we will have to go through permitting and engineering before that construction period begins. Um, but you can see there are, um, these are the major buckets, um, of activities. Um, in terms of environment health and safety studies, um, we have conducted a phase one environmental study, which is a study that is done to uncover if there are any existing environmental hazards at the site. No recognized environmental concerns were uncovered during the study. Part of the study will also, uh, or other studies will be conducted to survey for threatened and endangered species, presence of them in their habitats, cultural or archaeological resources, as well as a wetland delineation study, which will identify protected waters of the United States, and we will have to get, am I done? Okay, alright.
And we may have, counsel may have questions of you, but we'll have to, in keeping with our procedures, um, I have to ask you to.
Understood.
Yield, yield the podium at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would really like to get this information. I think.
You wanna let him extend on?
That's my, I, I think it's information that is crucial to our decision is.
Oh, okay.
Now, I don't know how I need to ask him, but we said we could ask him questions, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, how mu-, you think you can wrap this up in another minute or two, what you've got so far?
Um, yeah, I was, um, pretty much done with the, um, environmental slides. Um, the rest of them showed that, uh, in addition to, um, studying, um, uh, impacts on wetlands, there are also hydrology studies that have to be done. Um, Ms. Coleman identified that there are some flood plains on the site. Obviously, as the developer of record, we would not want to build anything in a flood plain. That's just a bad place to put something that's important to you. Um, and final engineering for all construction projects of this magnitude include, um, stormwater pollution prevention plans, um, as well as permits to be filed with relevant, um, state agencies in South Carolina. Um, we will also conduct glare studies for, um, uh, you can computer model, uh, the impact of sunlight on the array to make sure um, that we are complying with both the letter and the spirit of the county ordinance as it relates to glare studies and acoustic studies um, for potential noise as well too. Um, we have also had a third-party real estate appraiser um, do an analysis of the project site and potential impacts. Um, they found that in general, solar farms are good neighbors. They're quiet. They don't generate dust. They just kind of sit there. Um, unless you drive right past them, you don't know that they're there, and there are no anticipated impacts on, um, uh, residential properties, real estate values in the, in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. I'm gonna, um, kind of stop at this point, and I think for the audience, uh, if, if we've got those that still have questions, it might be best if we go ahead and let counsel ask him questions at this time.
I have one, I have, I have one question for him while he's there. So it's twenty five hundred total acres approximately, but you said only about a thousand of that is usable for this project?
Correct.
Do you have a drawing, basically, or, or some type of computerized model that shows what, where they'd be, where they would be, where these would be placed on the property, so you could kind of see what the buffers and boundaries look like?
We, we have a preliminary study, um, that does take into account the buffers that are indicated in the, the county ordinance.
Do we, do we have a slide that shows that?
I don't have a slide, but I have it saved on my laptop. If I can plug this thing back in, I'll pull it up real quick.
I'm just curious. I mean, I, I would like to know how it's, I'd like to know how it's laid out. Maybe nobody else does, but Mark says yes. Kathy says yes.
I'd just like to see how it's laid out.
I mean, twenty five hundred acres is a lot.
It is.
And if you're only using a thousand of it, you're using less than half. Right, that's what I'm trying.
I know, I agree.
That's what I'm trying to see.
I, I think we do need to.
That's what I was, that's why I was asking.
Sorry, this is gonna take just a second here. Alright. So you can, um, you can see in this map, um, we're kind of, um, this is, uh, Rock House Road, I believe. This is the flood plain that's indicated. Um, so you can see how, thank you, um, we have to avoid that area as part of the construction. These are also, we've done some initial desktop study of where we believe, uh, wetlands of the United States will be uh, delineated as part of the final study, so we've sought to avoid those as well too. Um, you can see how the, uh, one of the, one of the landowners, um, did not want solar developed on this part of their property, so we are, uh, avoiding that entirely. Um, and then you can see there are some additional areas we anticipate being delineated as wetlands, um, that we will attempt, uh, to avoid as well. Um, and this is, this is the preliminary location of the substation. Um, and we have also, um, filed an interconnection application to have, um, a battery energy storage system included as part of this project as well, too. Um, however, I do want to emphasize, all of this is completely preliminary at this point.
I understand. I just wanted to have some type of idea about what we're looking at. Thank you. That answers my question for now.
So all of the green dots are the projected panel locations?
The blue.
The blue.
The blue.
Blue panels are blue.
Yeah, the green, the green areas are the buffers around creeks and, and tributaries.
Oh, 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 all the blue is, or the panels, okay. So the owner of the property said, I don't want them on mine.
There's, there is a.
Part of it.
They wanted this piece of land for future development for themselves. Um, I believe they might put some additional houses there.
But it's land you have an option on.
Uh, our lease with them does not include that part of the property. That's why there's no solar array there.
Anyone else on council have any questions for Mr. Bowen?
I have one more, and I'm sorry. The buffer you're talking about, I think it was a hundred feet.
Yes, ma'am.
So football field, third of a football field, and that's to their property line.
Or to a right of way, right.
Okay, and you said a minute ago, unless you drive right past them, you wouldn't notice them. So is that a hundred feet of buffer, will there be things planted up to keep it obscured from their property line? So they don't see that?
So there, um, the ideal situation would be where there's existing trees that are within that, that setback area that we can leave as part of a natural buffer. And we also, um, in areas where there's not adequate natural buffer, we will come in and plant. Typically, we plant evergreen trees because they tend to stay full all year long. That'll provide visual screening for the project.
Your intention is to fill that buffer zone?
Correct.
Mr. Allison, you have a question?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else at this time? Yes.
I'll go ahead. One quick question. Even if tonight this council approved this, there's still a lot of stuff that could throw it off. It, it could still not happen. I, I noticed your presentation is a lot of other hoops environmentally, testing, a lot of other things that, that have to, have to happen before this is a hundred percent. This approval night wouldn't make it a hundred percent anyway. I guess that's what I'm saying.
We, we have to, this is the early step in the development of a solar farm, because if a county doesn't want a project, we have to know early on. But there are many, many more steps that we would have to go through before some general contractor gets a, a contract to build a project of this size. That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allison. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. I'll ask at this time if there are any others that would like to speak in favor of. Thank you. Could you, uh, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Tommy Cleveland, uh, Van Dyke, twenty-seven, twenty-nine Van Dyke Avenue in Raleigh. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the project in regards to health and safety. Uh, I've spent my entire career working in solar energy. I've been a lot of that time in health and safety and, uh, Duke Energy's engaged me to come be an expert. I'm an independent expert on health and safety. And I prepared a assessment report on this project. And I'm gonna talk a little bit broadly about the technology and what's proposed here, and welcome any more detailed questions you've, you've got. Uh, my background is I spent twelve years at North Carolina State University at a center that focused on solar energy and taught solar classes and did research. And it was a lot of early development in North Carolina, and questions about health and safety came to me at, at that group where I was. And led to me looking into topics of health and safety impacts and, and publishing an NC State white paper back about twelve years ago. Uh, and now I've, I've got a full-time job where I inspect solar and battery farms on behalf of utilities. Uh, they're a contract, we hire, they hire us as a contractor to go see that things were built correctly. So with that background, I can tell you that what's proposed here is very typical of hundreds of other projects, uh, in this part of the, the country, North Carolina and South Carolina, Virginia, have got lots of utility scale solar projects, some of which have been out there for ten to some close to fifteen years. And the experience has shown, there's just, there is no health or safety impacts from them. And that's based on that experience and also the understanding of what the materials are, how they're built. Uh, the panels are extremely safe, extremely durable. Uh, they are mostly a, a glass cover and a metal frame. And then they've got just a little bit of plastic, a little bit of a silicon-based, uh, photovoltaic material that actually makes the electricity, and then tiny bits of metal that conduct that electricity out of the panel and connect them all together to produce, produce the power. And that's most of what out, is out there, is these solar panels on steel and aluminum rails. You've also got some inverters that convert that DC electricity to, to AC electricity. Uh, they are basically big boxes of electronic switches that convert that electricity and connect it to the grid. Uh, it's all the same technology that's been out for a long time. It's well-proven. Uh, in my report, I go into these topics in detail, but the, the bottom line is there's no negative health impacts or safety impacts to anybody working at the sites or living near the sites, even for decades. There's just no impact, short or long term. And I'd be glad to, to cover any more details if you've got questions. I better be conscious of my, my limited time.
Great way, great segue. Um, and given the circumstances of the nature of this project, and I'm also ask if any members of councils ha- has any questions, uh, of Mr. Cleveland.
I have one question you may or may not be able to answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Where are the solar panels that typically that, uh, Duke Energy is using? Where are they manufactured?
I could speak more about the industry and not a speci- I'm not fully aware of exactly which panels Duke Energy tends to use. There's at least a dozen large manufacturers that produce very similar panels. Uh, they're made partially in Asia, partially in the US. There's been a big industry movement the last maybe three or four years to move a lot of production to the US. That slowed recently. Um, but industry-wide, I think the current number is somewhere like thirty to fifty percent of utility scale panels are, are made in the US now, which has been a big change just the last few years. But somebody more directly associated with Duke Energy Development might be able to answer, you know, for them.
Is there any other information?
Yes, you may approach, yes, sir.
Given the timeline for construction of this project, um, there have been some changes to the tax code. Um, so it, the project will have to comply with some new rules around, um, procuring, uh, product for solar, um, projects from foreign entities of concern. Um, and we will have to meet some, some new higher, uh, domestic content thresholds. So it's very early for us to have made a, a, a supply chain decision about who to procure from. But that, the, the rule, I'm just letting you know that the, the goalposts are shifting, right? And so when this project gets constructed, it will be a, a higher domestic content requirement than, for a project that might be built today.
Laws, federal laws.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any further questions before we move on? Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor of this project? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Cliff Redd. I live at six oh seven Five Notch Road, Bradley, South Carolina. I'm one of the, the people who agreed to lease Duke Energy some inter- some property for this solar farm. What I want to say is I've been approached probably three times in the past seven or eight years from different companies that, that wanted to do this same type of project. I never give them a second thought. When Duke came and talked to me, my first indication was no, I didn't want that. I said, I didn't want solar panels. I didn't want to see them. I didn't want that eyesore out there. We have a beautiful part of the coun- the county that we live in. Well, after talking to them quite a bit, they assured me about the boundaries, the setbacks, the evergreens. You would not see these things from the road. You couldn't hear them. You wouldn't know they were there unless you flew over them with a helicopter or drone. I didn't want to see them from my house. I didn't want my neighbors to see them from their house. I thought about it a long time, but I think the deciding factor for me, and I know there's gonna probably be some opposition here tonight, but my deciding factor was, was there's a lot of property there. And as y'all know, that there's people building houses everywhere. And me and my neighbors, or my neighbors and I, we've grown accustomed, I've been there almost thirty-seven years where I'm at, and it's quiet. But as my neighbors, the older people, they, they grow, grow older and they pass away, and they leave that property to whether there's young people here or, or that live in North Carolina or, or somewhere off. They don't care about this area. They just sell that to a developer somewhere. Next thing you know, we got housing developments popping up everywhere. So when I looked at this and said, hey, for thirty-five years, they're gonna have solar farms there. My way of life is protected. I, I probably won't be here in thirty-five years, and some of y'all won't be either, but my kids will be. And, and if we could protect it, I think solar is a pretty good neighbor. And we won't see it, we won't hear it. I thought about it from not only my point of view, but from my neighbor's point of view. And my neighbors may not have thought about it like that, but that's, that's, that was my take on it. I am convinced that Duke Energy would do what they said they would do. I mean, when you talk about some of these other companies that come in and talk to us, I mean, they may go bankrupt in, in a year. They may start a project and never finish a project. Duke Energy's got the means to do what they say they'll do. And, and I believe they'll do everything they said they'd do. Now, thirty-five years comes and goes, and they walk away from it. In my contract, they put the property back as it was when they leased it. So I think it was a win-win for, for us. It was a win-win for the neighbors. It was a win-win to, for, for a good neighbor, because we'd all be kind of foolish if we sit here and say that somebody won't do something with that property sooner or later around this, and it's not gonna stay empty forever. I mean, we, we all from Greenwood, we, we see property around here right now that we didn't think would ever be developed, and it steps going up faster, and we can look at it. So I think it's a win. So that's, that's just my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Appreciate that input. I'll ask again, is there anyone else here in the audience that would like, thank you? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Andrea Wages. I'm also with Duke Energy, and I'm at five twenty-five South Tryon Street in Charlotte, North Carolina, which is our corporate headquarters. I just wanted to really briefly just speak about, um, the overall, uh, development plan and how our intention as Duke Energy is to develop with the neighbors in mind. So you've seen plans that we have, which are all proposed and preliminary. As my colleague mentioned, uh, much of what we have proposed so far is what we'd like to do, but we won't do any of these things without having, um, informed conversations with those folks that are neighbors to make sure the things that we are attempting to bring forward, um, where we can make adjustments. And so if that means where we put the substation, or where we put the entry points, or things like that, that we want to continue to have, um, collaborative stakeholder engagement. Because we're in the very preliminary stages of this, with, this is what we refer to as early development. We did have an open house about a month ago, but we'll have additional, um, public meetings where neighbors can come and learn more about the project as we move down the development path. So I'm saying this to say that this is not a, we get it approved and we walk away. This is a situation that we're hoping to be, um, good neighbors, um, in the development process and taking into account what neighbors like Mr. Redd just mentioned, um, uh, would care about as it relates to this kind of development project. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wages. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, we'll move to anyone in the audience that would like to speak against. Yes, sir. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Olin Stanley, and I live at five oh three Markham Road. And I think Duke Powell is misleading us just a little bit. This is the map that y'all had listed. You had signs on it. Did you see the other map he showed that went to Rock House Road, down Rock House Road, down Markham Road? Up the other side, um, goes across Markham Road to Callison Road. He showed the map up here. I sit right in the middle of that. How would y'all like to wake up every morning looking at solar fields a hundred feet out of y'all's window? Is any one of y'all that would like to do that? Two sides of my house is drawn into blue. Any of you, would you, would y'all like to wake up and look at solar panels out your door every morning? Two sides, both sides of the road where you live, when there's no houses been there for years, and it's been quiet and peaceful. No traffic much, other than a few loggers. This is what y'all asked to accept right here. But this is not all Duke Powell's plan. He showed the rest of it a while ago. And if they can get this passed, they'll get the rest of it. Also, I work in construction. In fact, we bid doing some of these sites. And cutting timber and the worst that erosion you were talking about, no. When they clear that thing, they got to get in there, clean it up and grade it. It's up and down. And you talk about wash in these hills. That creek is, it's gonna be deadly. I've worked some sites, and we've had de-hack come in on us. But some of these sites, when they got as hilly as that land is, you can't control the water. I've seen the water up to the bridge right there at, um, Cliff's house on the creek right there. Um, we enjoy it out there. And I think that alternative energy is the way to go. But I think there should be some discretion. What Cliff's got there is not gonna be, it'll affect the corners up here of Rock House Road. The people that live there, there's a pretty good little settlement there. But the rest of Five Notch will not be really affected. But it's gonna come around, and they not stopping there. What did you say, twenty-five hundred acres? Ain't that what you said, that y'all wanting? And this is a thousand, so they're not gonna stop there, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
And I just would like to say that I'm dead set against it. If they do get the other property there, I do have a deed it right away right through some of the property they got, or they wanting. But a hundred feet around my house, they got, they wanting land on three sides of my house. And you can see my house on their map. It sits right on Markham Road, right in the middle of what they planning to develop. It's not as pretty as they want you, as they paint the pictures for you. I've been in it, I know.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, council, um, I'm Justin Lover, and I live at seven one six Union School Road in Bradley. Over last few days, um, I've been part of a group that's been canvassing out there, just trying to get a sense of the sentiment of the people that live out there. And then decided to kind of go around and with a petition in opposition, because, you know, quite frank, I'm opposed to this, and I just want to say who else might be as well. So we went out and canvassed, and I have sent y'all that petition. Do y'all have that? Okay, all right, well, good. One thing that was pretty clear in talking to everybody is those people, including myself, I'm actually building my forever home out there, is I had an expectation when I made that decision of how the land was used. You know, what I wanted to live in and what I don't. You know, what I wanted to live in, and what I want my children to be raised in. This is a far departure from that understanding. This is an industrial solar farm. It's bright. It's flashy. And this is the sentiment that I got from almost everyone we talked to. Almost unanimous, nine out of ten people that live out there, not, I didn't go far, mile or two from this area, is that that's not what they expected when they purchased land, when they built their homes out there. And so the overall sentiment is, you know, as you could see in the petition, is, you know, let's, let's not make these changes. Let's keep it as it is. There's other places in Greenwood County that are suited for it, in my mind, and I'm sure planning and then get all that worked out with Duke. Another thing that I have not heard is what benefit to the actual residents of Greenwood County is there? Now, there's a solar farm. Duke might benefit. Some of the parcel owners will benefit. Who else? I mean, I doubt a construction firm in Greenwood would, would do this. They'll get their rate. These parcel, parcel owners will get their monthly checks. And again, two out of the three owners of these, don't even live there. And the rest of the people are stuck with their rate. And so I'm just gonna make a, a case to y'all, plead to y'all. Now, let's maybe talk, talk to Duke and see if they'll put this somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Lover. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak against this request? Yes, sir. Please. We'd prefer the podium, if you don't mind. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
William Benjamin, three oh eight Union School Road, Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin.
And on my background, I was ten years with the National Wild Turkey Federation. I see nothing on there about what that's going to do to the animals, what impact that's gonna have. Couple of years ago, they did some logging down the road. It's only a couple hundred acres. It disrupted coyotes. They jumped the fence on my property and killed my dog. What's gonna stop that? I'd like to see a lot more done on environment, the turkeys, the deer. What kind of displacement's gonna happen to the animals? That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak against this request? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Wade Harrison. I'm a part-year resident, resident at nine oh seven Millway Road, Bradley, which is the area I grew up. And my extended family owns a lot of land. Some of them overlap this project, and will stand to benefit financially from this. So I'm conflicted in standing here, talking to y'all about this. I'm also conflicted because I'm a big supporter of renewable energy, and I, and I commend the Duke Power folks for jumping into that with both feet. But I can't in good conscience endorse utility-scale solar, twenty-five hundred acres, or whatever subset of that the panels are gonna be, in this location at that scale. This is a very rural, beautiful part of Greenwood County. It's part of the, Greenwoods. This is the Greenwoods. We're, we're starting to run out of that. And the rural and natural character of this place is a place where I, I don't think y'all should enable an industrial development here. That's what this is gonna be. You've, you've heard the description from Duke. This is not rural. This is industrial behind that buffer. It's going to be cleared, stumped, graded, I-beams put into, puncture the ground on a grid, twenty-five to thirty-five feet apart, fenced. No wildlife movement, other than small critters. Not a lot of place for the plants that create pollination, to bring in insects and make caterpillars, which the birds eat. You know, I, I like, sorry, I like listening to whippoorwills. I don't think we're gonna get much whippoorwill action, much less any whitetail deer or wild turkey action in this chunk of the county, if y'all allow this. Even if it's decommissioned thirty years from now, surely this is gonna transition to some other industrial use. Maybe energy technology, maybe a data center. It, it's gonna be irrevocable, and it breaks my heart. I do believe Duke and my family members have good intentions. But the habitat for deer, for the turkey, for the pollinators, it's gonna be severely constrained, and in some ways eliminated. Forestry is already hurting, and this kind of development will only be more motivated. And I'm finishing up. I guess on behalf of all the neighbors, who you've already heard some heartbreaking, in my own conscience, I haven't talked about the history of this place. It's, it's not a good place for solar. Don't, don't let this happen to this part of Greenwood County. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Harrison. I'd ask if there are any others that would like to come up and speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, counsel. Per, to, to quote the chairman, what's your pleasure?
I've mentioned earlier, I had gone to training on decision-making in a tough environment. And this is one of those, those tough times again. And I don't know how to word it other than say, I'm gonna make a motion that it's denied.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Ms. Miller. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Drag it.
Have a second by Ms. Griffin. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
I didn't get my motion out there. No, I was gonna say, I didn't get my motion out there quick enough, but I was gonna say that this is second reading, and if there were, if there were additional questions we had, we could pass it at second reading. Try to get the questions addressed by the, by the folks who had obviously great points about why they don't want it. Try to see if we could get Duke to address some of those. But if we just vote it down now, we won't answer those questions. It'll be done. And that's okay. That's what council wants to do. My, my motion was going to be, but Ms. Miller being to the punch, and that's okay. Was just that we pass it at second reading, but try to get, take the concerns of the citizens and see if we can't have a better understanding of, of exactly how Duke plans to address that. But I'm good with the motion. There's a motion at second on four.
Yeah, there is. We gotta vote on. But I, I should have reminded everyone that this is second reading, public hearing. So we do have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor of the motion to deny? Raise your hands. All opposed?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Is there another motion? Motion fails at this time.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that, Mr. Vice Chairman, that we, that we pass it at second reading with the, with the intent that we get, take the questions that we have written down up here from the residents, and see if we can't get some answers to those questions from Duke, and some understanding prior to third reading.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance with the understanding of getting questions answered from the vendor on this request. Any discussion on the second motion?
Thank everybody for coming and speaking to us. I mean.
I have one question.
Uh, not, no, sir. Not during the middle of a vote. I said, no, sir. I'm sorry. You're not allowed at this point. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, Vice Chairman, I thought it failed. So what, so what are we doing?
The motion failed.
That motion failed.
And I asked, was there a? Now, we've got another motion.
Which could also fail.
Yeah.
Which could also fail.
That'll be my career here.
Second reading now?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Allow a third reading, is what you're saying.
Yeah, the, the motion failed to deny, then there was a motion to approve.
Second reading.
Second reading. With, and with the understanding to get questions answered from the vendor. We had a second. We've had lots of discussion tonight. I'll ask for a vote of Mr. Templeton's motion to pass second reading. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries four to two. Mr. Manager, I would ask that we.
I want you to get all those questions that we, 'cause I know they're in the record.
Yes, I actually asked the clerk while y'all were talking, do we have a list of these questions? And I don't believe we do. So what I would ask is to, tomorrow, if you would email the clerk any questions that you have, that you would like to have answered, she can compile and send back out to you as a group to verify that we've covered everything, and then we will present them to Duke.
We also have the video to go.
Yeah, but you guys probably have notes up there, and we'll make sure we got everything.
I agree.
So if y'all would just email us your, and if they're duplicative, we'll take care of that. Just send us what y'all got, and we'll put it together.
So just a quick reminder to the audience, second reading did pass under those stipulations. There will be a third reading as well. It is scheduled for the next scheduled meeting, which would be November second, fourth? November fourth. And I would also remind you that any item that is on our agenda, we are allowed to entertain public comment.
Correct.
Not public hearing, but public comment.
The same, the same individuals that spoke tonight could come back and speak again.
You are given that opportunity. So, and I would like to reiterate, I appreciate how civil this matter was handled. I understand the sensitivity of it. Appreciate you guys attending. But I think we need to have a motion to end public hearing at this time.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? And I guess someone could retrieve the chairman from timeout. Thank you.
My phone's gonna light up. My phone's gonna light up. It may still fail. I'm not sure I'm in favor of it, but I'd like to get a little more information. I know we've talked about it a bunch. My phone's gonna blow up though, because most of the people that are here, they called me today, but man, it's hell.
I didn't think. It failed.
Hey, it may not pass.
It failed.
Yeah. Somebody retrieved chairman, yeah.
The, the thing about it is, that motion failed.
Thank you.
They had the, the next motion.
After your sabbatical from timeout, are you ready to resume the meeting, Mr. Chairman?
I am, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you for filling in for me. I appreciate that very much. You closed the public hearing, Chris?
Yes, sir.
We're at new business.
Thank you. And we voted on all matters that were conducted within the public hearing.
Well, when you left, you made that comment, but we had voted on them as we went. So we only had to vote on the one. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
So we're gonna go back now to, we're gonna go back. We don't have to move back.
We're new business.
Yeah, thank you. That was long enough. I could've taken that nap, I was telling y'all about it. Yeah. Called DoorDash, and had some food brought in to me.
You about to make, you about to make me make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
New business, ladies and gentlemen. Discussion of Greenwood County Policy five point one, time and attendance regarding hours of operation. This is, this is, this is first reading entitled, no.
No, it's, no, it's a vote. It is a vote.
It's a vote, because we, we've already had this. So let me say that again. Discussion of Greenwood County Policy five one, time and attendance regarding hours of operation. Counsel, we've had much discussion about this. Entertain a motion for our vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer you a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Templeton.
Drag it.
Have a second by Ms. Griffin. Any comments or questions before we vote?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
I do as well. Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Thank you. Okay, I'm all in it tonight. I just want to publicly state and clarify my understanding. I was not here at council when it was originally voted upon to do a modified work schedule. In reading the policy, I've learned in having conversations with county manager and our HR director over here, Ms. Rhonda, I've learned that the modified work schedule folks work from seven forty-five to five thirty-four days a week with a thirty-minute break, which results in a thirty-seven-hour work week. And that the people who are not on a modified schedule work seven and a half hours per day, times five. So they're thirty-seven and a half hour work week. So that was my first concern with that. And then the second conversation that I had was around the data that was provided about what impact that the modified work schedule had. As I, as I understand, it was done to help with the recruitment retention. So the data that was given to us is before the modified policy, or the modified work schedule was implemented, there was a nineteen point six seven percent turnover rate within those departments, which equated to about fifteen people. Now, keep in mind, there are about seventy-eight people on the modified work schedule. I'm estimating roughly. So about fifteen people. After the implementation of the modified work schedule, it dropped to fifteen point seven nine, which is twelve people turned over. So a difference of three. So we saved three folks from turning over. My concern is that with the other folks that are not on the modified work schedule, there's about three hundred and twenty-two of those folks, much of them in emergency services, which I can understand. They have basically held flat at twenty-one percent before and after, of course, their years. They had no changes in their schedule. But twenty-one percent of their number of employees is sixty-six, sixty-seven number of people who have overturned each year. So my question is, what are we doing to affect the higher number of turnover positions in those non-modified work schedules? And I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. So I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought you were done.
No, so I just wanted to, to have that on record as saying that, you know, we do have a small group of employees that are on the modified work schedule. There has been some small decrease of about three people from the prior year, but they are also working less number of hours than the other folks. Thank you.
Did we not, my question was really, I guess, to, I don't know if it's to Rhonda or to the manager, but as it relates to public safety, and this would've been prior to Kathy coming on too, so she would not have known that. We did a, we did a major change in EMS in order to, because we were losing so many. We did a, we did a major change in EMS in order to, because we were losing so many people to other counties in EMS, and so we had our EMS director come in and do a major presentation where, where he, um, where he changed their work schedule, changed the way it went, so that we could better retain and recruit, and that has worked out well, is, as far as I know. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
I would say, I would say it's made progress. I would, I would say, yes, there have been attempts to make corrections in public safety, and we've acknowledged that significant part of public safety is not under your or my purview, so you'll have the ability to alter their schedules to those of us. Uh, but in terms of EMS, which, which you do have control over, we have changed the schedule at least twice in the last, I believe, four years. We have changed how you pay them in terms of compensation for longevity. You don't think anything else we've done. Yeah, we did their building, they were part of, they and the potential service, the home two departments that received a ten thousand dollar sign on the policy department money.
Your mic's not on. Mic's not on.
So, I, I think that's five or ten things right there that we've done in the last three or four years to combat those specific departments.
Thank you for that information.
Uh, holiday premium pay that they're eligible for, uh, that the firefighters are for. So, again, I think that's probably half a dozen things we've done for the two of the three public safety departments that you actually deal with over the last three to four years.
Yeah, and I'd say in addition to that, um, as far as fire department goes, I think we made a change in the schedule to allow more flexibility for, um, Mr. Holmes, because we really needed to improve volunteer and potentially full-time for the fire department, added pores program. You know, I, I would like to say, as far as me, and, and I can't speak for everybody here, I would say everybody I've talked to are pro-employee. You know, in addition to that, the, um, five-year bonus, can I use the word bonus, Madam Attorney?
She doesn't like that word.
Uh, employee retention stipend, uh, every five years. You know, my, my concern, and I, I wanted to say it for the record, I think people deserve to know my thoughts on it. I did get emails, uh, from a few in departments, um, wanting to keep the four-day schedule. You know, I always want to think about, as Mr. Allison will say, the taxpayers, because they pay all of our bills, and, um, you know, we need to make sure we're there to service their requests and their needs at all times, possible. But I also need, realize the need for us to be, uh, competitive in the workplace, um, not just in salary, but also in benefits, um, quality of life. And, um, I do see where, you know, the four-day work week has helped in some regards. So, you know, I've, I've been for and against, but, um, at the end of the day, I, I want to be pro-employee, and unless, you know, I get a stronger case thing, we need, uh, to go back to five days. Right now, I'm in favor of staying where we are, um, but I'm also okay with us analyzing it in a year again, like we did. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Allison.
I was one of, initially, when we implemented this over a year ago, that really was not in favor of it. And I wanted to, us to do a little more research before we kind of dived into it as to what the public would think. So I wasn't in favor of it, but, but I will have to say that, uh, the staff has worked hard to make it work. I think, uh, both the inspection offices and all that, that where it really affects, have, have kind of went out of their way to try to accommodate the, the, the office not being open on Friday. When we first started doing it, it was people, just a lot of people, but you know, most of them so like me and they don't like change, so, uh, it, it takes a while to get adjusted and figure out the way it works and what you need to do to, to get with the program. So, I'm kind of where Dane's at, I'm always, you know, I want to help our employees. I would love a four-day work week if it was me, so I want, I want to help them do that, but I want to serve our public. But I do feel like we've come a long way since we started it. Took a little while to get it figured out and all, so I'm kind of where, uh, you are, Mr. Pruitt, I will support this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? I'll, I'll speak briefly to this, I recall that when, when this started, the focus of the consideration was, um, was recruitment and retention. And we said at that time, as, as you all have heard, that we would revisit this in a, in a year, and we're true to that word, we're doing exactly that. But I would like, before our vote, and Mr. Manager, you probably need to help me with this, or Ms. Rhonda, we talked some weeks ago about the employee survey and the results of that survey. Now, if I had, if I had a, a, a concern, or, or, or if I could've been more pleased with the survey, it might've been, Rhonda, that more people had participated in the survey. But you can only take what you get. So in regard to the outcome of the survey, would you mind coming forward and just sharing those numbers if you have them at the ready?
I've got the summary with me, I don't have all the details, but I do have the summary with me. It was very simple. The first question, um, are you pleased with the four-day work schedule? We had fifty-eight responses out of seventy-eight. Ninety-four point eight were in favor, five point two was no. Uh, question two, if, if you were hired after September four, twenty twenty-four, did the new schedule impact your decision to take the position with Greenwood County? Eighty point seven percent said it was not applicable, so it was a lot of long-term people. Uh, fourteen, uh, percent said yes, and then five point three said no. The, has the four-day schedule impacted your decision to remain with Greenwood County? We had sixty-nine percent that said yes, and then thirty-one percent with no. Question number four, if the four-day schedule were changed to a five-day schedule, would that decision influence you to seek employment elsewhere? Thirty-two percent said a hard yes. Uh, we had forty-one percent maybe, and then twenty-five point nine that said no. One of the departments recently, off, off the top of my head, that did not go to the four-day schedule, we recently lost that person to a local, um, attorney's office, and they stated that if you guys had gone with the four-day schedule, I'd stay for a better work balance with my family.
Okay, thank you, good feedback. And the last thing, I, I think, over the course of the year, I've heard a few times that there might be somewhat of a misunderstanding that the employees now work less hours for the county, and I know that's a miniscule amount of time, and I met with the county manager to talk about that. So, Mr. Manager, you explained that pretty well to me, so for the benefit of the public, I'd like for you to explain that now.
Yeah, it's half an hour a week, which, if you do it over four days, is seven and a half minutes a day. You also have, and, and Stephanie and Rhonda can speak in more detail, if you're on the modified schedule, you get two less vacation, uh, two less holidays per year, and the value of your vacation days is less for the people on the new schedule, because you need ten hours to be off versus eight. So when you put all that together, again, I'll let them speak to the actual numbers, I think you get to essentially very close to the number of actual hours worked over the course of a year.
Okay, thank you for that.
That is not information that I have.
So, well, good, I did something good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Allison.
One other comment I would like to make, uh, kind of piggybacking on Ms. Miller's comments, uh, after seeing the survey and, and stuff, a, again, I'm, I, I think we need to, we're in this course, we need to stay the course on this, but I don't necessarily know that if, if it's really helped our recruitment or to keep people. So we may have to look at other avenues, uh, because if you look at those numbers, the stats that she gave, it wasn't a lot of, lot of difference. And that was one of the, one of the reasons that we implemented this was, was for that reason. The same reason we changed the scheduling for the EMS, trying to hold on to people, so.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, with all due respect to Ms. Miller's numbers, I don't know where they are, I didn't see them, I don't know where she got them from, but the numbers we have, seventy-five percent of the employees said either they will leave or will consider leaving if you go back. I don't know what more you want from that. I mean, that to me is, that is the set, that's the question. Question was, are we recruiting and retaining people? And if seventy-five percent of them say, I'm either leaving or considering leaving, if you change, that to me, that answers the question.
In your numbers?
That's the number she was getting, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I, I don't know what more we would want to see than seventy-five percent say.
I, I won't debate this, but I would certainly say if you're giving me a, a bonus and wanting to take it away, then I would be upset as well, so I don't, I don't consider that invalid. I, I would go back to the point of, of what I think I was trying to make and Mr. Allison was supporting is that I am all for recruitment retention, but to have a, a savings of three people was not really moving the needle from this particular objective. So, I agree that they're gonna say they love it and they will leave if they don't have it.
And, and I, I agree on your bonus analogy, but what I would say, I think Stephanie has some different numbers, and I haven't seen your numbers, so I can't speak to them, but I believe our numbers are significantly different and three people saved over the course of a year.
Well, again, that, the, the, my point was not the fact that if we went back now, seventy-five people would leave, that's the reason, one of the reasons, and again, I think we've, we've worked it out. But one of the reasons we done it was recruitment, was to, uh, and to whole people, keep from losing people.
Sure, and, and I think the other question was, it did, the new schedule influenced you to come to Greenwood County and take the ones out that were already here, take them off the board? But I believe it was three to one said it did influence me to come versus influenced me not to come. Right, do I have those numbers right, is it? Y'all have the numbers, I believe that's what it said. So I think in terms of recruitment and retention, both statistically can show that it is, it has had an impact. I'm sorry?
Okay, good discussion, any other conversation, Ms. Bishop?
For me, um, I used to work for the city, so I understand, you know, when you're working from, um, eight to five, eight-thirty to five o'clock, Monday through Friday, it's hard for you to do anything except, anything personal, you know, Monday through Friday, um, unless you're gonna take time off. Um, and so I just think it's such a great incentive for our employees to be able to do that. I know everybody's not doing it, but because the county provide, um, emergency services, that's, that's why we're not, they're not on that same schedule. And so, um, the thing about it is, as CPW did what they did to adjust theirs, and then Metro, Greenwood Metro did it, what they did to adjust theirs, the city did what they did to adjust theirs, um, it did make us have to look at it, and it, our, our reasoning for doing it may change. If our employees love it, I think it's, and, and it's working, let's continue, you know, that's the way I look at it. And then also, uh, it was good to get the emails from the employees. The employees were telling us how they're enjoying it, they, they love that they don't have to take extra time off, they can do, go to the doctor on, on Fridays, I mean, I, I do, I really can relate to that. I can relate to that, because I've, I've had to live it. So, I'm excited about this schedule, and I think it's working pretty, it's working really good. Um, I think that's a great incentive, could, I mean, even my uncle works for CPW. And before we did this, I asked him, what do you like, what, what you thinking about being off on Friday? And he's, he was happy, he was happy, he went, he goes to, I can't tell, I can't tell all this business, but I'm saying, he was happy. He might get me, he was happy to be able to be off on Friday, and he's worked for CPW for over thirty-something years. So what I'm saying to you is, so many places, when you work for them and you're loyal for them, they don't, they, they're not loyal to you. So, I think it would, it's just a good practice for us to continue to give our employees this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel, any other discussion? I'll, I'll close this by saying, I think in all regards, it's important for county government, when we can be, to be nimble and to adjust to the circumstances that come before us. And I feel, and I feel like, I personally do feel that this was a good thing and that it, it, that, that it did bear fruit. And, and beyond that, uh, I know that takeaways are hard, so, uh, I would, I would not want, barring any kind of compelling data or, or reasons, to take anything away from employees. So having said that.
I'll offer your motion to approve.
We got a motion.
Already on the table, it's already there.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second by Mr. Templeton.
No.
It's already there. By me.
I made the motion.
Mr. Templeton made the motion.
And I'm calling the question, let's vote, please.
Ms. Griffin with the second, I'll ask all in favor of approving as presented, please signify by raising your hand. And after all that discussion, that is unanimous, thank you very much.
We've only got another half of the alphabet to go, Mr. Chairman. Pardon me? I said we've only got another half of the alphabet to go.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And Dane's already late for stuff.
I'm thinking about breakfast now.
We're gonna try to move through this quickly.
I gotta go by the hotel.
I'm trying to go to my big, I'm trying to go to my big coffee.
Thank you, you in a second.
I got my pages. I'm good, I'm good.
We're getting a little delirious up here. I haven't had.
Item B, is approval of twenty twenty-six official county holidays, and county manager will give us information on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in your packet the twenty twenty-six official county holiday schedule. I believe it'd be self-explanatory.
I'll offer your motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion or question? Chairman?
Yeah, I'll ask my second question. Would you like me to answer the question that you're asking? Oh, he left.
Wait a minute, you have a crystal ball there, man?
I, no, he knows. But I've sat here for thirteen years, thirteen years, Mark Allison's asked the same question. That's not a crystal ball, that's just not being stupid. The question is, how does this conflict, or if anyway does it conflict with the city's schedule, specifically as it relates with building inspections?
That's a question. Well, if nothing else, Mr. Allison is consistent.
He is in fact consistent. Uh, the answer to your question, Mr. Allison, that you didn't ask, that I asked on your behalf, is there is one conflict this year, and I, it's clearly, I think it's not really an issue whichever way you want to solve it. But, as I understand the city's schedule, with the exception of Christmas Eve, we should all be on the same day. But Christmas falls on a, Christmas Day itself falls on a Friday in twenty twenty-six. The city, if I understand their schedule, is taking Thursday, Friday. Our B group, our eight-hour group, would be taking Friday, Monday. So there'll be a slight conflict for some of our people on that day. But for our admin people, we will be taking, Thursday will be the holiday, we'll already be off on Friday, and then we'll be off on Monday, so there's gonna be, there's gonna be a Monday-Thursday conflict right in that period. But other than that, the rest of the days match.
So my question is, how does that affect the offices? Because the city occupies the, uh, annex office, and the county occupies that office.
Yeah, the, the only, with, with the moves that we're in now, well, let me, let me think about this.
You see why I ask this every year?
No, I, I know why, and I'm just trying to think, because in December twenty-sixth, they're not gonna be out there. They're gonna, we'll be back in Park Plaza.
Okay, we'll be back.
So I'm, so I'm trying to think, I still think you'll have that problem, but you'll have the city in Park Plaza. I don't think we would be in any other buildings that conflict, so.
It will all be at that one.
Yeah, the only conflict you, you would have would be building inspections being. Yeah, the only conflict you, you would have would be building inspections being closed on Thursday, but open on Monday, and this county office being open on Thursday, closed on Monday. So I think you have a very slight conflict, which got to where I was in the beginning, which is, I think this is a very minor issue. If council was like to change it, then feel free to, to match them. I don't think it's a huge deal if you do or do not change it.
Having heard the manager's explanation, any other questions or discussions before we vote? If not, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask you to, all in favor to approve as presented, please raise your hand. All opposed? That passes on a six one majority. Thank you. Item, item C, con- consideration of the approval to accept timber bids for two thousand twenty-five pine sale at the Greenwood County Airport. Our county engineer, Mr. Rhett Templeton. Rhett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed in the past, we use timber sales at the airport as part of our funding for airport operations. Uh, our forester, um, recommended that it was time to do a pine sale, so we went forward, um, and used our timber manager to request bids. We received bids. I believe those are in your packet. And we had several, we, we, I guess we requested six different bids. We got, received two back. The highest bid was for just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what they were, um, that we'd be, they'd be purchasing our timber for. That was very close, within a few thousand dollars of what we were originally estimated by our timber manager to, um, to receive, so I felt like it was a good bid. Um, our timber manager agrees it's a good bid. We're just asking for your approval to move.
I'll offer your motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion by, Mr. Pruitt, second by Mr. Templeton. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approval as presented, and that's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item D, consideration of purchase of an excavator for the road department, public works director, Mr. Rob Rushin.
Uh, as part of your twenty-six budget that we're in now, we had budgeted for the purchase of an excavator in our road department. Our purchasing policy allows, uh, purchasing from state contracts with certain requirements. We have met those requirements. As part of your packet, you have bids from three vendors, uh, including a local vendor, Carolina Power Equipment. Uh, the low bid for this, uh, particular piece of equipment was Bobcat of Greenville, a total cost of hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Again, these funds are budgeted. Um, staff recommends approval and award of the bid to Bobcat of Greenville.
Question to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop. Any discussion?
One question. How much is it?
Hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and some cents.
Okay, thank you.
Having heard that explanation, if no further questions or, or conversation, all in favor is presented. That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. All right, we're gonna, we've got one, two, three, four, five items here, and we're gonna, we're gonna take these items in, in order and then vote them at one time. Mr. Manager, I think that's the way we would like to do that. So, item, item E, consideration of the marketing right and option agreement buying between Bessie L. Martin, Walter Gilbert, Mary Stansel, Fannie Bell Gilbert, and Greenwood County. Mr. Bateman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I will tell you about all five, if you would like.
Please.
In, in order. Uh, this one and the two after it, uh, on your agenda are all less than one acre parcels that are in the center of an existing industrial site. I don't know if you read each one, but then, uh, those are surrounded by approximately seventy-four acres, which is the McCord Option Agreement. That is uh, item number H on your agenda, which adjoins the Sneed Property, which is the fifth and final option agreement before you tonight, that is item I on your agenda. All five of these, from item F through item I, comprise a existing industrial site that is a little more than two hundred and eighty-five acres marketed as the Hodges Corporate Park. And your consideration of these five options would secure county control for five years, which would maximize the Department of Commerce site certification and designation.
James, for clarification, for the record, I think that's E through I, not F through I. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer your motion to approve E, F, G, H, and I as presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Templeton, second by Mr. Pruitt. If there's no further questions or discussions, Mr. Allison.
What if somebody wanted to vote against one of them? How would you do that? Just ask them.
He's being silly.
Just ask them.
Since they're all tied together and they're all small bodies of land, I guess I made the assumption that
Go ahead.
we wouldn't vote against one of them. But if you'd like for me to take them into business.
No, I'm fine. I'm good. I can vote against it, just like I did everything else.
Having heard that discussion, if there's no further, in favor of, of voting this as presented, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous and includes Mr. Allison. So thank you, Mr. Allison.
I don't think we can go past anything.
I, I.
You're wrong.
Item J, if nothing else, this council is in.
Chair, chair.
Item J, considerate, con- I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, can, can I, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I believe item J has been withdrawn at the request of the owner.
Thank you very much. You, and you're absolutely right. That, counsel, that, that was withdrawn, and I'm sorry I failed to make a note on my. So Carol, you can take a rest. Uh, I, I do believe, though, that will come back to us, Carol, potentially in another form, I believe. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that. All right, council, if there's, if there is nothing further, we will move into district reports. District one, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Um, just like to remind you all that, um, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness. So please, as we could, um, before the end of the, um, month, wear your pink for breast cancer and wear your purple in observance of domestic violence, and just keep each of these, um, programs and individuals in prayer, because we never know what, what someone is going through, and pray that you all would just have a, a great rest of this evening. And, um, thank District One for all that we do to make Greenwood better. So ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. District two, Mr. Allison.
Mr. Chairman, I had a lengthy report tonight due to the lateness of the hour. Due to the lateness of the hour, I just want to say all is great.
All is well. Thank you. District three, Ms. Bishop.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
No report. District four, Ms. Miller.
I, I did two things of, of mentioning, is I did do SCAC training in Columbia. One was on decision-making. And one was on taxation, and one came in very handy today. Um, the other one was, um, that I, I did, we did get invited to tour the, uh, the jail down in Edgewood County by Sheriff Roland, who's a friend of our family, and it was a very impressive tour. I'd encourage everybody that has a chance to, to get, do that. Yep. That ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Uh, District five, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as usual, I do have some to say. Um, great night, um, and, and I'm real pleased at the civil discussion that we had, and, and I hope that those that are in attendance, uh, appreciate you guys for doing it. Those that are still here, what were you thinking? Um, but anyway, um, appreciative that you have joined us for this meeting. Um, last night I attended and spoke at the Harborside Subdivision HOA meeting, and, um, you know, I want to say again, I'm really proud that Channel Utility is expanding and solidifying their location here in Greenwood County. Ten point one million dollar investment, thirty-one new jobs. Thank you. On a personal note, last Friday, Tracy and I celebrated thirty-three years, and I'm quoting her now, of wedding bliss together. Did I get some laughter from you on that, uh, clerk? Also, the biggest news to date, on a personal note, uh, we could not tell everyone how excited we are, but Tracy and I will be grandparents.
Congratulations.
And I am going to end my report, as I always do, with a Bible verse. Colossians four, five through six says, "Be wise in the way you act towards outsiders. Make the most of every opportunity. Let your conversation be always full of grace, seasoned with salt, so that you may know how to answer everyone." That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. District six, Mr. Templeton.
Uh, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. One, Mr. Pruitt, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Tracy, uh, being a grandparent is the most fun that you can ever have. Um, people ask me all the time what it's like. I said you can't understand it until your kid puts their kid in your arm, so you're about to find out. It's awesome. Um, and thank you, Ms. Griffin, for mentioning, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I was going to do it, but you did it. Um, it's very close to, to me and my household, as my wife is a five-year breast cancer survivor. Um, second leading cause of death in women is breast cancer. One in eight women will be diagnosed in their lifetime, every two minutes. Uh, every two minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer. So, um, we do try, we wear a lot of pink at the Templeton House, and we do try to support that. And the last thing, I'm going to steal from Dane. I can't believe he didn't do it, but his old football coach is going to be put into the ninety-six Hall of Fame, Coach Shale Dula, and he is a great individual, and I know Dane played for him and might have something else he wants to say, but it's a great, it's a great, it's a great honor for Coach Dula. That ends my report.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, congratulations, obviously, to Coach Dula. I thought everyone was tired of listening to me speak tonight. And, and also Zeke Goode. Um, he coached on that same state championship team, uh, under Coach Dula. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bateman, step forward for one minute, please, sir. So, uh, I want to thank Abby for pointing this out to me, because I had missed the headline. Uh, the South Carolina Economic Developers, Developers Association, um, announced recently that nine members were recently earned the credential of South Carolina Certified Economic Developer. James Bateman was one of those. James has done an excellent job for us in the time that he's been working in this capacity, and this is just, James, another step, positive step in your career, so congratulations. Um, those newly certified statewide economic developers were recognized on October tenth during the mid-year members' meeting, but I think it's, uh, it's worth noting that this distinct honor is awa- is awarded to very few applicants each year, and since the program began in two thousand and one, only a hundred and thirty-one have received that designation. So good job, James. Very proud of you. And I'm going to clo- I'm going to close tonight with, with not an inspirational comment from Ms. Sheila, but Ms. Sheila sometime from time to time will share a, 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 a moment of, of laughter or brevity, uh, or not brevity, uh, a joke, a joke with me, and if I can get back to her right here, I'll tell you what that was this morning, because I thought it was kind of funny, and it was, where was it? Well, I don't see it, so we'll, so, oh, yeah, it was. She says, "I know how it's going to end one day. One day my children will unplug my life support to charge their cell phones." If there is nothing else, the county council, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
I hope it's the heat.